For the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call vote please. Brown not here. Evans here. Hootie not here. Grattan.
Here.
Shuster.
Here.
Shanks.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
First item of business is the agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So. Second.
Motion by Shanks, second by Shuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approve minutes of previous meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Grattan.
Second.
Second by Shuster. Any further discussions, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approve minutes of intervening meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Shuster.
Second.
Second by Evans. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public appearances and citizens' comments? Michael Al.
I'll slow you down a little bit if you come up. I'm here as a citizen tonight to let you all know that I've been going to sell my house and move up north. So I'm here to say my farewells to everybody, but I'll be around. Jason is still in the area, so I'll be back and forth. But when I was filling out the paperwork, I shouldn't have been surprised, but I was surprised when I said I was living at that house for almost 35 years. It's hard to believe it went that fast. Just want to say I appreciate everyone working with you on a number of projects. And it's always great when you can work on projects in your hometown and feel good about what you did. So I do, and thank you all for supporting me and everything we did. It was a good time.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
We certainly will miss Mike. I think he's groomed his son very well to take his spot. But Mike is, he also worked for the city for a period of time as the director of Public Works and engineer. I don't know what your official title was. So I've worked with Mike a long time, known Mike a long time, played a lot of ball with Mike over the years and what have you. We're both crippled now, but we had a lot of good times together. And Mike was one you could call after hours, and he'd always take the time to answer your questions. And I think that says a lot for himself as well as MSA. I think they've always given us a fair shake and always did a good job for us. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have approval for payment of bills. Checks for $199,414.15. Vouchers for $148,292.37. Electronic transfers for $182,333.84. Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Grattan, second by Shanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Grattan.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Sorry.
Shuster.
Aye.
Payment of bills have been approved. Excuse me?
You skipped communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. Communications. Do we have any tonight, Sean?
I do not.
You do not? Next we have more mayorial appointments to the library board. I've got it. You got it? You want it? Okay, whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing to give themselves by serving on the library board, and whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointments. Rosemary Schman, Library Board, her term expires on 7/2023. Jennifer Hirschfield, also on the library board, 7/2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 13th day of July 2021. Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Motion by Shanks, second by Shuster. Any further discussion? Rosemary has been on the board for many years. I think Jennifer came on about the time you started or shortly thereafter.
She filled a half term.
Okay.
And then this says, then she served a full two-year term. So this will be a reappointment for another two years.
And both?
She serves currently as our treasurer and is very capable in that capacity. So I'm thankful that both women were willing to be reappointed.
Any other questions or comments? Paul, you have anything to add? You sit on the library board.
No. They're both really great members of the board. They have a lot of insight into what's going on. Rosemary, like you said, a lot of time there. It's been a good education tool for me as my short term on the board. So excited to have them back.
Other questions or comments? Roll call vote please.
Shanks.
Aye.
Shuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Mayor Oil Apartment 25, 2021 has been approved. Clerk Treasurer.
No reports at this time.
Building permit report. No police, Juneau Fire, or Juneau EMS report. Any questions on the building permits? Moving on, reports of commissions and boards. Jeanette.
Hello. I just wanted to let the public know that starting this coming Monday, July 19, we are getting new shingles on the library building. The shingles are... The building was built in 1997, and so they're original, so it's time to put new shingles on. We're also getting a new gutter system, seamless gutter system as well. If you drive by the library, you'll see some parking spots have already been kind of blocked off in anticipation or some of the dumpsters and things that will be required for that debris. I am assured that the entrance part will be done outside of library hours, and so you should be safe to access the building during all of our open hours during the week, weather permitting, that it takes to get new shingles and gutters on the library. Lopez Roofing, Alid Fondalac is who we have contracted with for our roofing project. I brought a few programs with me, Mayor Wagner. I don't know if people have followed us on Facebook, but we have been hiding different tails all around Juneau this summer because our summer reading program theme is tails and tails. And so currently, there is a tail hiding somewhere in Juneau for this week, and there have been five previous tails throughout June and early July. So this tiger tail was hanging off of the new playground equipment in our city park last week. How do you know how to find these? I have a daily clue that's posted on our website and also posted on our Facebook page. So follow us to get those clues. Lots of things going on as normal, but a new thing that we're also doing at the library is a puzzle exchange. Puzzles aren't just for winter. Sometimes when it's really hot, it's just nice to stay indoors and do a puzzle. Actually, we are checking these out. We're asking you as a Juneau resident to take place in this. If you have a puzzle you've done that you don't expect to ever do again, bring it to the library, add it to our puzzle exchange shelf, and then take a new one home. So we just have an area where you bring one in, take one, and we circulate them that way. Thousand pieces, Dan.
I was just gonna ask.
Thousand.
Do they have to have all their pieces?
Well, they do. It would be, it would be nice if all the pieces were there. But yeah. And then something I'm really excited that the Parks and Rec Department and the library and the City of Juneau as a whole has been working on the past few months is an outdoor movie. And we have named it Centerfield Cinema. We are actually going to show an outdoor movie on the Softball Diamond over by the community center on a large inflatable 33-foot screen. It will be projected, and the date is Friday, August 13. Yeah, Friday the 13. And this was an inspiration of other communities around us that have done outdoor movies as well. In fact, Beaver Dam last year did these, and they are loaning us their screen and their projector, the Beaver Dam Chamber, to help us get launched. And we have purchased speakers with a $1,000 grant that we received from AARP. So we're all set to go, and we will be showing The Sandlot. You can't pick a better movie to show for the first Centerfield Cinema. If you've ever seen this movie, it's a 1993 movie, rated PG, and a great family feature. So come on out. We'll have popcorn and bottled water for sale at very reasonable prices. And bring your lawn chairs or blankets and set up on the Centerfield and enjoy a great movie. In order for this to happen, we need volunteers. So I am looking around the table, looking for people that might be interested in working in the popcorn stand, helping us just make sure everybody knows where to go on that first night. I don't anticipate parking issues, but just contact me or Sean, and if you're willing to volunteer, we'll find a slot for you. This first Centerfield Cinema is sponsored by Becker Lawn Care. It does cost a licensing fee to show a movie publicly, and that is not a cheap fee. And so Tony with Becker Lawn Care has graciously donated that licensing fee for our first startup. So if you're watching this and you'd like to sponsor our September movie, as our goal is to continue this in the month of September, contact me at the library or Sean at City Hall, and we'll happily take your money. So with that said, let me just check and make sure I don't have anything else. I think I'm good. Ah, one last thing. We, as in Monarch Library System, will have a booth at the Dodge County Fair. So things are starting to open up, and we are excited to also at that booth announce, because the fair is in Beaver Dam, that Beaver Dam Community Library will be joining the Monarch Library System in September. So that takes us from 31 libraries in our system to 32. And that just makes it easier for our Dodge County residents to get the materials they need. So we're thankful to have them on board. Any questions?
Dodge County Fair is in town of Oak Grove, not from you.
That it is in the town of Oak Grove?
Yes.
Okay.
June O'Malley.
June O'Malley. June O'Malley address. Learn something new every day. All right, on the outskirts of Beaver Dam in Oak Grove.
There you go.
I stand corrected.
You gonna sell bug spray at that movie?
Bring your own.
You got a rain date with the rain?
I don't, I don't think we do, only because we're sharing equipment.
I think we'll move it into the gym.
Yeah, we are going to do a practice run and make sure that that fits in the community center gym. It should, and then that would be our, our rain date. There. Yeah, good question.
It's your failsafe.
It's our failsafe.
Any questions for Jeanette tonight? Thank you, Jeanette. Moving on, Plan Commission Chairman report.
Plan Commission, we did meet. We discussed the project approval for automated pet care. We needed to rezone the property. I don't know where did it go. I touched it. It's just gone. We needed to rezone the property to a PUD so that they could have two separately, two separately owned lots, correct? I'm still trying to find it. In order to join the two together, to use them, because they want to join with a sprinkled hallway between the two buildings to get their product through. Thank you, Dave. So we, we did that. Then we also looked at Michelle Tiller's property. She had the vet care service in town, and she has changed her property's use. And after much discussion, we found that the present zoning adapts for what she's doing, so there's no change, no zoning change required. There was a site plan for the 1850s Inn for a sidewalk café. It came to Plan Commission for the layout of the fences, tables, and chairs. And it was all done according to the site plan that was taken up with the Public Safety Committee as to the plans they put forward. It's going to be a trial for now, this year, to see how things go, if we need to tweak any of the rules of it, of the outside sidewalk café. And then we'll have an ordinance that makes it, makes it good. But we have several places that want to try that. We combined the two parcels for the pet care. There were two together that were next to each other that we joined. That motion was taken care of. Let's see. Then we had some property maintenance. Some houses have no railings upstairs where people could fall off their roofs. Things of that sort that we looked at. As well as there was no fence around 207 West Street. Yards filled with trucks, and we're gonna have to look at that. Can't think of anything else unless you can, Dan.
I think you hit it all. Any questions for Dave? Moving on, finance. Paul, you're taking finance.
Yeah, I'll be finance in Cheryl's absence. So we met. I'll have a few resolutions for some of these items. We discussed and approved moving some of the money that was budgeted for the gym floor restriping to be used to buy additional playground rubber chips to be put down at the new playground. So we were to be able to meet the correct depth there. We discussed the city purchasing the streetlights from the electric utility. However, there was a lot of unanswered questions, so we did not take an action, and that'll get moved to the next electric utility meeting. We also discussed and approved hiring ServPro to do a deep clean of the community center kitchen before the new proprietor takes that over. We discussed and approved the hiring of MSA to administer the Wisconsin DNR lead lateral replacement grant. Let's see. We talked about the clerk treasurer and some flexible working schedules for that with no actions taken. And that was it. So perfect. Asked resolutions.
Any questions for Paul?
All right.
Moving on.
I got resolutions.
Yep.
Okay. Making sure you weren't skipping too far ahead over there.
You're good.
All right, Resolution 26, 2021. Approve using a portion of gym floor restriping money for playground rubber chips. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed a request from the Public Works Department to use a portion of the budgeted gym floor restriping money for playground rubber chips, and whereas the Public Works and Finance Committee recommend to pay for the required rubber chips needed to meet standard requirements in the amount not to exceed $6,100 from monies originally budgeted for restriping the gym floor. And now, here. And now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau of this 13th day of July 2021. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 26, 2021.
Second. Motion by Shanks, second by Shuster. Any further discussion?
So you're not gonna restripe the gym floor?
We are. So Scott believes that the money that was budgeted for it is a lot higher than what it'll actually cost to do the job. We only got one bid for it so far, and that was the bid that we used to come up with a budget for it. It's also not a necessity, whereas with the playground equipment being put in, getting that extra three inches of rubber, mulch, you know, soil stuff that you have to put down was more of a priority at the moment, so.
We weren't happy with that bid. We didn't think it should cost that kind of money to strip a gym floor.
Restriping then?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we just put it in there for budget purposes, hoping to seek a lower bid. This is a safety issue. We can't, you know, have that park opened up and have kids... Not like the good old days.
They need six, they need six inches of rubber now to pull off, or in fact, you know, when we just have mulch or sand.
Sliver's that long, and those wooden rails go down there. Guess we can't do that anymore, so. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Shanks.
Aye.
Shuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Resolution 26, 2021 has passed.
All right, second one for me. Resolution 27, 2021. Approve hiring MSA to administer Wisconsin DNR lead lateral replacement grant. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed a need for the City of Juneau to have all lead water laterals replaced as required by Wisconsin DNR. And where there are grant monies available to help with the cost of the replacement of these lead water laterals. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends to approve hiring MSA to administer the Wisconsin DNR lead lateral replacement grant at a cost not to exceed $5,000, which can be reimbursed through the grant funding. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 13th day of July 2021. I'll move for passage of Resolution 27, 2021.
Motion by Shanks, second by Evans. Any further discussion? Anything the Als would like to add tonight about that? Nope.
No, and as it stated, there was, the money is available in it to pay for the cost of them doing the administration of it, so.
So much per home. So much for the project, right?
Yeah. We're looking at what city is probably gonna approve. I think our original application was up to $5,000, I think. But, yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Shuster.
Aye.
Resolution 27, 2021 has passed.
Resolution 28, 2021. Award construction bid for Highland Street project. Whereas the City of Juneau, Wisconsin, did advertise and received sealed bids for the 2021 Highland Street project. And whereas one bid was received and is on file with the city engineer as shown in Exhibit A and summarized below. Fitchinsky Construction, Inc., $1,037,360.15. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this 13th day of July 2021. I'll move for passage of Resolution 28, 2021.
Second. Motion and second on the floor to accept. Further discussion? I met with, or I conversed with, after receiving the only one bid. I met with the Utility Commission last night and spoke with the Als over the weekend, and I don't think it's wise for us to accept that bid seeing it's extremely high and over our estimated cost. I'm proposing that we, we hold off and do a rebid and include East Oak Street in with the project, expand that project, and hopefully get a more favorable bid and at least get a number of bidders. I guess at this time, had a conversation with both Mike and Jason regarding this. They thought it was a good move as well, and I guess I'll turn it over to Jason right now to speak on that.
Yeah, I mean, with, with this one, just because of the timeline that we had, obviously, the, the project bid out here in the middle of summer, which is right in the middle of the construction season, so with the fact that we only received one bid isn't completely surprising just from the fact that all the contractors are busy with work this time of year or whatever. So again, the discussion with, with Dan or the mayor was that there's a, there's a good chance that if this is rebid and potentially combined into a larger project that there may be a one more interest or whatever when it's rebid. But then also if we can, you know, bid it during that more prime time, which is around December, January, or whenever, when most of the contractors are looking to build up their workload for the, the coming calendar year or whatever, that again, we may see some more favorable bids. As everybody knows, there has been kind of an uptick in material prices and things like that, so there, you know, we still may see some higher prices. That's not a guarantee that we're gonna see lower prices necessarily, but there's a good chance that if we, if we get competitive bidding from multiple contractors or whatever, there's a chance that, you know, that we're gonna see better pricing and, and, you know, again, what those, what those pricings end up being, if it's gonna be significantly lower than, you know, than what we're seeing right now, or, or only slightly lower, is, is still to be foreseen or whatever once, you know, once things kind of shake out with the market and as time goes on here, if things improve or continue to stay a little bit on the higher side as far as material costs go, so.
Jason, we only discussed that there was quite an increase on things like mobilization costs just from our South Main Street project, what's proposed for the Oak Street project. So I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us as a council to, to go ahead. If this was at our estimated cost, I could swallow it, but I don't think it's responsible for us to accept only one bid or approve one bid when we don't have any other ones to compare to. And like I said, I think it's, it's logical that we will get a field of bidders because that's prime time for, as Jason said, for construction to, to look for their calendar year fill rather than, I'm thinking we got a courtesy bid here, I think, as much.
Probably.
I know it's gonna create a little bit more chaos, but I talked to Jason on that too. If we could continue to do it in the same format, trying to attack Highland Street and get that pretty much well put together before we start tearing up Oak Street, so we kind of keep the chaos to a minimum. Then we also talked when we met with the DNR people about the lead abatement program, about possibly including more of Oak Street from Depot Street up to Fair Street because we're quite sure we have a good share of number of lead services there too. So we could possibly give the right-sized contractor a whole year's worth of work, you know, if that was what somebody might be looking for, or most, most contractors will be looking for. Mobilization equipment is always a big cost, you know. If they're, they're doing three little jobs, it costs them more than one, one job three times the size or whatever, so. Any questions or thoughts on that? Would you like to?
Yeah, with the additional knowledge there, I will amend my motion to hold off on approving this and seek more bids.
I think first line of work, we're gonna have to give MSA authorization to start the design work for, for Oak Street. We don't have that done as of yet, so that we can get an estimated cost in there. And I guess that would, we don't have that on the agenda tonight. We'll have to proceed with that at Finance and Public Works, I guess, then to promote it. We don't have any problem with, like, with you starting it. Uh, we don't have any problem with, like, with you starting to do some of that stuff, but you wouldn't have the official go until next council meeting?
You okay with that amendment, second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion to accept the, the bid for Highland Street has been withdrawn. Any further discussion? Stand on, motion to, to accept the amended bid not to release or not to accept the bids for Highland Street. Roll call vote, please.
Shanks?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Schuster?
I think I have one more.
Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one has passed.
All right, resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one. Approve a developer's agreement with Auto Pets. Whereas the city of Juneau, Wisconsin Finance Committee at their May fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting approved a commitment to Auto Pets LLC of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars tax incremental financing for its expansion project from, from tax increment district number four and whereas payment will be made in equal installments over a period of ten years to developer, according to attachment A, developer's agreement related to tit number four. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this thirteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-one. I will move for passage of resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Shanks, second by Schuster. City attorney?
Yeah, I think it's a good developer's agreement. Uh, I see the one in here actually, uh, still has ink, but you got mine that changes it to LLC right?
Yeah, I got it, sorry.
Yeah, uh, but in, in order to get this, uh, Auto Pets has to meet their obligation of increasing value by nine million dollars, the tax increment value. So I think, uh, if they do that, it's a very good agreement for the city and then you'd have to meet your obligation. So Auto Pets has done an awful lot for the city and I think this is a good agreement and will help foster their increased development in the city and nine million dollars of additional increment value would be a significant boost for the city.
Sean? That you wanna add?
Oh, I would just have to agree with the attorney. Um, I mean, the increment is gonna well cover the cost of this payback to them, um, but I think it's a great thing for the city.
Any more questions? Stand on, roll call vote, please.
Shanks?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one has passed. Personnel?
We did not meet, on the report.
Public safety.
Oh, actually, I'll take that back. Um, our rec, uh, director did, um, put his two-week in and his last day was today, so we are supposed to be in the rep report as well, but we'll have two interim rec directors tag teaming it until we have a new hire, so I guess that's personnel, so.
Any questions for Paul? Public safety chairman's report.
Uh, we did not have a meeting. But you will have two resolutions to read. Resolution thirty, twenty-twenty-one. Approve to extend premise June American Legion post number fifteen, Veterans Benefit Fund, ATV and UTV poker room. Whereas the public safety committee has reviewed a request from the June American Legion Post fifteen to close Miller Street to Fair Street from nine AM till five PM and whereas the American Legion has also requested to have their license premise extended to include the close off street on Saturday, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one for the purpose of entertaining the public and the Veterans Benefit Fund, ATV and UTV poker room. And whereas all hard liquor and wine pool is mostly in plastic containers and whereas the public safety committee recommends approving all requests as stated above, now therefore be resolved, the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this thirteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Grattan. Any further discussion? This isn't the first time they've done this.
Oh, they do this every year as well, yeah.
It's a good fundraiser and
Yep.
They always police the, the street after they're done and what have you and all the, the only man hours we get tied up is the DPW dropping off the barricades and they'll set them up and take them down, put them in one spot for the DPW to pick them up, so really no cost to the city, so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Shanks?
Aye.
Resolution thirty, twenty-twenty-one is passed.
Resolution thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Approve to grant beer and liquor license. Whereas the city of Juneau has received an application following to sell malt beverages and liquor with a period ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, as shown below. Class beer B, beer and liquor applying as a limited liability company. Chef Chance LLC, Chef Chance LLC five hundred, Lincoln Drive, Juneau, Wisconsin, five three oh three nine. Agent Chance Schamberg, agent address one twelve twenty-six, Hawthorne Drive, Beaver Dam, Wisconsin, five three nine one six. Whereas the notice was published in the Watertown Daily Times and three consecutive publications and whereas the public safety committee and the Juneau Police Department have reviewed above and both recommend approval of these applications pending compliance with ordinance five point oh eight, point oh forty. And now therefore be resolved, the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this thirteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Schuster, second by Shanks. Any further discussion? Stand on, this is our new proprietor of the community center, our new old proprietor of the community center, so, uh, it's gonna get business at hand so they can start operating. He's already got a few events lined up, so happy to see that August first is working out for his deadline or working out for his entry date to take over.
Yep, starts August first, yeah.
Roll call vote, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Shanks?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Resolution thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one is passed. No other questions for John? Moving on.
Go ahead.
Public Works.
Public Works, we did meet. We were sent a letter from Jim Rungy. He was, and we read the letter, was concerned semi-trucks passing through on East Center Street. The concern was sent to public safety for possible no truck signs on Miller Street. What was happening up at Jim's house, the, they're looking into the chimney on the manhole in the street, if there's being any damage to that chimney from the trucks, the trucks from Menards, I shouldn't pick on that, and the semi-trucks passing over it, that it may be damaging the manhole. Public Works is gonna go down in there and check it out. They also thought was putting a, a no semi-truck sign on Miller Street to stop the semis from going around the courthouse square. So that'll be taken up by them. We discussed, uh, cost share agreement policy with Dodge County road signs, there was no action taken. We discussed, uh, working at the dumpster. Right now, we lost the gentleman that was, um, working the dumpsters on Saturdays and Wednesdays when it was open for the public to come in. And the discussion was, do we use money from the budget for this? Do we do straight time or comp time with our present workers? Uh, we were gonna have Sean look into the numbers to see what would work best for the city for the situation between rehiring a person or using our employees and, and doing straight or comp time. We approved sending to finance for the rubber chips, which was well discussed. We approved cleaning the community center kitchen. In order to have it ready to go for the next client, we needed to clean it thoroughly and found a cleaning service that would come in and take care of that for us, that it was done correctly and up to
State inspection.
State inspection standards. One of the right words. Uh, there were two estimates that have come in for the culvert on Kent and Industrial. It is rotted out on the bottom, we're waiting for more estimates to come in. Scott thought that the, about some of the bids were a little high, so he was checking for others. I see I have a second reading of an ordinance. If I can find it, right down here, five.
Can we motion to skip to second reading of the ordinance?
Second.
Proceed to vote. Motion by Shanks, second by Schuster, to forego the second reading of ordinance two sixty-three, twenty-twenty-one and proceed to vote. Any further discussion? I think we kinda beat it to death last time talking about the, the heist, uh, the trees having to be trimmed up over the roadways. Pretty self-explanatory. We have city-owned trees naturally that are in the terrace area, very few of them anymore. Then we also have private-owned trees that hang over the city through Fair, over the sidewalks into the, into the driving lanes, parking lanes that have to be trimmed up to an adequate, um, height there so that, uh, they're not rubbing on vehicles, causing issues, so. No other questions? We can vote at this time, roll call vote, please.
Shanks?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Ordinance number two sixty-three, twenty-twenty-one with amendment twelve, twelve, zero, four, zero, has been amended. Has been approved. Moving on, cable TV. Jane is not here tonight, we did have a meeting. I think basically we did, discussed ideas for, uh, for recording. I think Sean's been approached to do a, a report. Scott has been doing, has been approached to do a report like on the leave site, explaining to people what should be dumped, what shouldn't be dumped, how it should be separated down there. They're always talking about different ideas for, for filming, just to kinda mix it up. The young lady, I forget what her name was, she actually worked, uh, IT for, for city Columbus, she moved on to a bigger and better job, so we will no longer get her services anymore that I am aware of. Um, Jane had ma- mentioned that she might, might come back for some taping incidents or whatever, but like, I don't think there's any guarantee. I think she's moving on to Watertown, a better full-time position than what she had at Columbus, so.
I believe she's still doing a Facebook manager, everything for cable TV.
That's right, and she was gonna help us out with that. Other than that, that was too much, I think it was a pretty short meeting that night as well. Any questions on cable TV? Moving on, CDA, we did not have a CDA meeting. Recreation, well, we had meetings, yes.
We only actually had one meeting, we, actually, sorry, we had two meetings, we did not have a traditional, um, meeting. Uh, we had two separate meetings. We, uh, had our rec director, um, put in his two-week notice, um, and accepted his letter of resignation, which I have a resolution for. Um, his last day was effectively today. And then we actually had a follow-up meeting after that, uh, where we discussed the rec director's job requirements and also instituted an SOP, so going forward, hopefully that will kind of, self-explanatory, you know, resolve some of the conflicts and issues that we had last six months, uh, with that position, so. With that, we also, um, offered, uh, Gail Emsler a part-time position as the interim, um, director while we're searching for another one, as she was our previous rec director and she knows everything pretty well. Um, she only has a certain amount of time that she can work, uh, so we, um, offered Wendy Jo Smeda the assistant-type position, uh, to kinda cover the time where Gail can't be there, so, uh, they both graciously accepted that, um, and we're moving forward with that. I have a resolution as of, uh, resolution thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one, to accept letter resignation from Michael Seamus O'Reilly, Recreation Director. Whereas the common councilors received a letter of resignation from Michael Seamus O'Reilly, Recreation Director, and whereas the common council recommends accepting the letter resignation effective July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as seen in exhibit A, now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this thirteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-one. I'll move for passage of resolution thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Shanks?
Aye.
Second by Evans.
So with, with that, Seamus, uh, spent just over six months with us, um, and did do a lot of things as far as kinda putting us in the right direction for technology, put the rec department with, you know, getting us a Team Silent website, scheduling online, accepting payments online, uh, and really pushing his, uh, goal of getting the city a splash pad. So he, he did put some good work in, uh, in starting some good projects and getting us in a good footing for some of those things moving forward, so hopefully our new rec director will be able to continue working at that as well as, you know, working towards some of our older programs and promoting those as well, so.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Shanks?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Schuster?
Resolution thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one is passed. Anything else to report?
Nope.
Moving on, utility commission, council member Richard.
We had a meeting last night, um, unfortunately the minutes aren't posted yet, so, and I'm not a very good, actually I don't take notes. So I just, I'll point out some highlights that I can kinda remember. Aaron Worthman from Baker Tilly came and he presented the sewer rate study. And, uh, we didn't take any action on that, we're just, but there should be action coming up in the next month or so, I hope. We also discussed the transfer of ownership of utility-owned s- s- streetlights like you were talking about before. It seemed like Aaron was, um, against this idea. He hadn't heard of it before, um, but he was gonna check with the PSC and do some research into it and get back to us. Let's see, what else? Uh, we received two applications for the water wastewater superintendent opening. The utility personnel committee will be meeting soon to discuss that. And a notice will be included in the next utility building, billing, uh, statement that's sent out, that payment should be dropped off at the, the utility building. They don't want them dropped off at the city building any, any longer. Let's see, what else happened?
Real quick, the reason behind that is so when you drop a check off, it's not sitting here for the extent of your time, they can get it processed faster, is that the kind of mentality towards that?
Yeah, sometimes they, they don't, uh, get delivered in time and there's been some problems with, uh, possible disconnections because of it, so. So they would like, you can still, um, pay through the mail or online, but drop your utility payment at the utility building, please. We approved some new displays for lift stations one and four, we approve, approved a trial and possible purchase of a new phosphorus analyzer at the wastewater treatment plant. Nick reported that Digger Derek might be ready next week, he's hoping. And, uh, then we went into closed session to discuss selection of an electrical contractor for the South Highland, or not the South Highland, the Highland Street project. And I think that's about all I wanna say. Anything else?
Only thing I have to remember, just to give you a heads up on a streetlight discussion, I reached out, Darren Worthman's been our, our utility accountant or from Baker Tilly for many, many years there and, um, I wanted to find out the pros and the cons in shifting the, the streetlights from the utility ownership to the city ownership and he was adamant that they should remain in utilities' possession, but he was going to research it. He didn't know many utilities that did share costs on these and I told him how we had proceeded and I also told him that Huesusburg was pretty much fifty-fifty, village-owned and utility-owned and they even have different electrical rates for their lights, village-owned versus utility-owned. versus utility-owned. So that sparked some discussion, that he thought he better go back and research it a little bit more, to give us a good hard recommendation on what we should do. He said it's much cleaner if the utility owned them all, and either charged the city a payment in lieu of taxes and a monthly service charge for the lights, as well as the power that is consumed. He says that's the much cleaner way of doing it than how we're doing it right now. I'm kind of torn. Like I said, I probably promoted it, you know, to, to get rid of some of that financial burden from the utilities' books onto the city, especially when you're doing new streets and new construction. The village of Huesisburg kind of came into it when the lights were funded seventy-five percent for the state, when it was a, a state project, you know, funding the parking or driving lanes. Usually that's how it does when, when we did Highway twenty-six, we only paid for the parking lanes, the state paid for everything else, the driving lanes, street lighting along the route, so that's how you get kind of off-track on some of that stuff, and that's probably what happened at Huesisburg as well since Juneau, but anyway, he's gonna come back and do researches it a little bit more. And then I guess that water and sewer, or, or rate structure for sewage dealing primarily with Sensient, he had some good solid numbers, and now we have to determine how we're gonna promote that with, with Sensient and meet with them, with one of their reps from Baker Tilly that's been handling it for us, and see how they accept it, make us more so than anything. We've got solid figures on how it should be divvied up through the different rate classes, and Sensient will take a significant hit, there's no two ways about that, so we've gotta know how to handle that, because PSC will ultimately have the, have the last say in it, so. That's about it, I think they covered, or tried to help you out a little bit there.
Thank you. You must take better notes than me.
Kind of had it for thirty years. Okay, any other questions for Richard? Say none, any old business tonight? Any new business tonight? Bartender's license, that's a public safety thing, I think we should take that.
Okay. Provisional license, forty-five days, recommend approval, Stephanie M. Jacobs, Don Patzer. Recommend, I'll none. Recommend, approve regular bartender license for twenty twenty-one, expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Recommend approval, Catherine Farrell, Stephanie M. Jacobs, Christine M. Lackey, Janet S. Murkies, Emily A. Nitkach, Don A. Patzer, Edward J. Spitz, and Chase Chomberg. Recommend I'll none.
Motion for those?
Yes.
I want to make a motion to approve those.
Motion by Shanks.
Second.
Second by Evans. Any further discussion? Say none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business?
I'm gonna go with Jerry.
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Shanks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Harry, this meeting is closed.